Good evening and welcome to the December 8th, 2025 City Council Special Meeting. Tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom, and tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, welcome to all and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen? Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here, and Councilmember Washington has requested to be excused for tonight's roundtable and also council meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Washington?
To move second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, sent by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And motion passes and Councilmember Washington is excused. Now move to the first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve this special meeting agenda.
So move second.
They moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, sent by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And the agenda is approved. So first we start with service recognition. And tonight we are honoring Councilmember Ethan Benson for his service to the community with a Service Recognition Award. Councilmember Benson has been a Councilmember since 2021. He has served the community through his leadership, dedication, and perspective. On behalf of the residents of Snoqualmie, we thank you for your service. And I have a plaque here. Can we get his face up there, maybe a little bit bigger? No, he can't.
Well, we'll have to do it. Well, thank you.
I will read it to you. Oh, there we go. Alright, so it says service recognition. Councilmember Benson was elected, I guess this is the same thing I just read, to the city Snoqualmie in November 2021. He has served the community with integrity, honesty, and compassion. On behalf of the residents of Snoqualmie, recognition is presented to Ethan Benson on this day, 8th day of December 2025. So, it's a beautiful plaque. Congratulations. And thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Mayor.
Do you have any words of wisdom or comments?
Oh, I never have those, but I will say that it's been a real honor serving with this body. I have appreciated everybody I've got to deliberate with on the council. It really has restored my faith in government. I appreciate the fact that everybody that I work with in the city wants good things for the residents of the city and works conscientiously to make sure that they are well represented. And it's been a real honor to sit with all of you. I am absolutely certain that the man that's going to take this seat in January is going to do an excellent job and work well with you and continue the excellent work that this body does. So, thank you very much. I'm only really disappointed that I'm gonna miss out on Katie's cake. I hope you guys will save me a piece.
I heard it was your favorite. I think Mabel asked for this particular flavor, so we will eat it.
Which one is it?
Butter cream with raspberry.
Oh, man. Rob's gonna eat it all.
I'll eat it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chiggy Bakery. You are the best.
Yes, they are. So, excellent. Thank you. I guess next option for our next item up is Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
So I'll take over. Mayor Ross, I had the pleasure of participating in part of your journey of community service here when as a freshman council member. We worked together on the library board.
That's right.
Many years ago. From there, you progress into council and your other community service outside. And then four years ago, the city was in need and you heard the call and stood up and said, "I'll run for mayor," which is quite a feat for anybody to do. So, Mayor Ross, we, the council, and on behalf of the citizens of Snoqualmie, would like to thank you for your service to the city as mayor for the past four years and for your leadership during that. And as a result in that, we have a plaque for you. And we have retired the gavel of your service and it is yours. Well, let's just say that, okay? I hope we cycle through the gavels.
Well, thank you.
But yes, for your past four years of service and leadership, thank you. And a plaque in your honor. Do you want a picture with your husband?
Well, I think you can hand it to me. We'll take a picture and then maybe.
I was so caught up in applause. I didn't realize. Victor's gonna coach me through this, right? Can you lift it up just a smidge? There we go. Listen to you.
We need to turn and light keep slow.
It's okay. Okay, you're being funny. Oh, do your short show? Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
Okay, I got a few. Thank you. Are you going up there now?
Yeah.
Come on up. And do you want to take the color?
Yeah, come on, come on. Let's get this bright.
Oh, I love that. I was looking at the shirt. Okay. Oh, and you got so poor bad. Okay.
Redo.
Redo like a parrot.
First one was for parrots.
The time I didn't know if you were.
I take two for you. Guys.
There we go. Thank you.
Fond to look going on.
I have a couple of comments. So first of all, it's been just an honor to serve the community for nine years, so five on council, and then four as mayor. And I deeply appreciate the trust or residence placed in me. And can you believe I was in seven elections? So I am glad that's behind me now. Thank you. So over the past nine years, we spent a lot of time together. I counted more than 600 Mondays and Tuesdays in meetings. I'm looking forward to getting my Mondays and Tuesdays back. Although the mayor's job is technically part-time, at least it's paid that way. I average about 50-hour work weeks, and that's close to about 10,000 hours over the past four years. And that doesn't include the bonus hours such as those not-so-good calls in the middle of the night or responding to email on the weekends. We have an incredible team that works for the city. And they're talented, they're dedicated, and they're hard-working people. And they care deeply about our community, and they show up every day and they, you know, keep our quality of life very positive here. So they're wonderful. I want to thank our local business merchants. We have a couple here tonight. You are the heart of the community and the backbone of our economy. And in our partnerships through roundtables and events and just countless conversations, you've helped strengthen the historic downtown and also Snoqualmie Ridge. So my husband retired three years ago, and he has been making my morning coffee, making my lunch, attending countless events with me. And he actually needs a service award as well. So it is time to retire, and I'm looking forward to getting my Monday and Tuesdays back and off to a fun adventure. So, thank you. So now what?
Now we recess and take a break until 6:30.
Yep. So we have State Auditor's Office at 6:30. So we have wonderful cake over there provided by Chiggy Bake Shop and coffee and treats. And so we can recess at 6:10. We'll come back at 6:30.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Be first in line.
Well, you got Ethan's too, so yeah.
I know. I got to get.
Right. It's 6:30, and Nixon's Estate Auditor's Office Entrance Conference, the 2024 Financial Statements and Accountability Audits. Finance Director Boutte will introduce this item and introduce the auditors.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, before we begin, just want to say it's been a pleasure and an incredible joy to work with you for these past four years, including Councilmember Benson as well. And I just want to thank you for your service, your spirit, your vision, your attention to detail, your kindness, and your decisiveness during these past four years. And so it means a lot to staff that we had you for these past four years, and you will be missed. So thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
With that said, transition to Fiscal Year 2024 Entrance Conference for the audit that we're kind of currently conducting right now. With us online is June Lee, the Assistant Audit Manager, as well as Zach Shelton, who is the Assistant State Auditor on this audit. And so I'm gonna turn it over to them. In essence, we're kind of kicking off the audit engagement with this entrance conference. And so they will introduce you to the audit engagement and the scope overall. So if you have any questions, they'll be available, and I'll be right here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Andrew. And we always like to, obviously you did the introductions for us, Drew, but would you mind going around and doing some introductions for the city before we kick off our presentation?
Sure. Drew Boutte, Finance Director for the city. We've got Councilmember Benson online with us tonight. We've got Councilmember Walton with us, Councilmember Holloway, Councilmember Cotton, Councilmember Christensen, Councilmember Johnson. We've got our City Clerk, Dina Dean, Mayor Ross, City Administrator Mike Chambliss, and then our City Attorney, Dina Burke with us. Plus, you also have an audience back here that you can't really see, but it's pretty extensive, so we won't go through everyone necessarily in the room.
Great. Perfect. Well, thanks so much. And then I'm going to be sharing my screen for a presentation. So let me pull that up right now. Here we go. And let me know when you can all see that.
Yep.
Perfect. Alrighty. Well, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today to discuss the commencement of the city's 2024 audit. So my name is Zach, and joining me today is June. So our goal today will be to share some information related to the current audit, including our planned audit scope and resources that can be of assistance to your government. So before we get started, it's important to note that the presentation we prepared for you today represents a summary of topics that we want to bring to your attention. And so to supplement this presentation, we've also provided a packet of information where you can find more information on the topic shared today. So while we don't plan to speak directly from the packet, we are prepared to reference some things that can be located. And so with that, we'll begin. So firstly, the office of the Washington State Auditor is tasked with being the auditor of all public funds. And so as such, we're responsible for auditing all state and local governments, of which there are currently more than 2,300, spanning over 40 different government types. So our office has nearly 500 professionals who specialize in governmental accounting and are located around the state to help accomplish this body of work. So above all, our staff is committed to partnering with our government liaisons in promoting accountability and transparency in government. And so on this slide, you'll see the various types of audits that SAO conducts, with each having their own specific objective. And so while we specialize in a wide variety of audit types, not all are applicable for each government. And so we've noted those types that will be included in our scope for your city on the left that we would like to describe with you today. So we have accountability, financial, and then other engagements, which will be our attestation. We'll go through each one of those directly. So first is the accountability audit. So we'll conduct an accountability audit, and that will cover the period of January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024. So for this audit, we utilize a risk-based approach when selecting areas for further review. So as part of this process, we do a number of planning steps that include conducting risk assessments with key members of the city, reviewing minutes of the governing body, conducting analytical procedures, reviewing prior audit results, and also assessing areas of common risk for cities across the state. So based on the planning procedures performed, we identified the following areas for inclusion in our audit. Police department, specifically with the evidence room. Tracking and monitoring of theft-sensitive assets such as computers, tools, and equipment. Surplus equipment, specifically with disposition and receipt of sale proceeds. The open public meetings. Compliance with minutes, meetings, and executive sessions. And also financial condition, in which we will review for indications of financial distress. And so at the conclusion of our audit, we will publish a report that will show the results of our review, including the areas examined. And so while we selected the areas that we've shared with you today, please know that we also remain open to any suggestions for additional areas that the governing body or management would like us to consider. Alright, and continuing on, we also will be conducting a financial statement audit. This is going to be the same period as the accountability, which will be January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024. So the objective of a financial statement audit is to issue an opinion as to whether the financial statements presented for audit are fairly stated and also are materially correct. And so they are in accordance with the cash basis reporting framework. And so while there are four different opinions that can be issued, an unmodified opinion is what you want to receive, and that demonstrates your financial statements can be relied upon to accurately and correctly present your financial activity for the period. And so it's also important to note that our audits are conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. And so those standards also require that we take a look at the city's internal controls or the processes that it goes through to prepare the financial statements. So if we were to become aware of any issues with your processes that could or did allow for misstatements to occur, we are required to alert you of those during our audit. And then lastly, we also remain alert to any identified instances of noncompliance that could impact the information presented in the financial statement, and we will also bring this to your attention if identified. At the end of our engagement, we'll issue a financial statement audit report to the city in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting for the bars manual. So this report will detail the opinion being issued, the results of the city's internal controls and compliance, as well as a full set of the audited financial statements. And then the last audit we'll be conducting will be an attestation audit. This is that same period, January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024, and it will be a SLURF compliance audit. So that is the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. So we will be conducting an examination of compliance with allowable activities and cost requirements of SLURF funding. And just for your information, SLURF funding costs amount to 96% of total federal expenditures for fiscal year 2024 for the city. Alright, and also an important part of our office is the continuous communication between our audit staff and yours. And so there's a number of ways we strive to stay connected throughout the audit process, and some of which we've included in the slide with you today. But we want to draw to your attention two specific things. The first one is weekly status meetings. Those are one of our most important tools to keeping you up to date. As our name suggests, this is a reoccurring meeting with the audit liaison to provide you with an overview of the audit. So it's a great opportunity to discuss what's been completed, what's still in process or not yet started, and then also discuss any questions or concerns as they arise in the audit process. And then lastly, the exit conference. We are committed to ensuring you have the opportunity to hear directly from us about the results of your audit. And so we'll work with management to schedule an exit conference, and we'll invite all governing board members to attend our report out. So please note that if a quorum of governing body members plans to attend, the city is responsible for ensuring the Open Public Meeting Acts requirements are satisfied. And then next, throughout the course of the audit, we may find recommendations that are necessary to bring to your attention. And so our office has three primary levels of audit recommendations that we use to convey the significance of audit issues identified. So first are audit findings. So audit findings constitute the most significant level of audit recommendation that can be issued. Audit findings are the only level of reporting that are included in their entirety in the audit report. And then in addition, if a finding is issued, the city will be given the opportunity to respond and provide that response in the finding that will also be published in our report. This is important to help readers not only understand the issue found, but also any information the city has and wishes to share on how the issue itself or its planned course of action is going forward. So in addition, please note that certain external standards may require audit issues to be reported as audit findings, and this is commonly encountered in the financial and federal audit engagements. Then next, we have management letters. So management letters are audit recommendations that are less significant than an audit finding, but still important enough to bring to the attention of the governing body and management in a formal letter. So while management letters are not published in their entirety in our audit report, they are referenced, and they still constitute a public document. And in addition, it's important to address management letters, because if they go unresolved, they could be elevated to a finding in future engagements. And then lastly, we have exit items. They are our lowest level of written recommendations. And so exit items are very normal in the audit process, and they're often likened to housekeeping items or minor noncompliance matters. We will provide a full list of exit items identified to management for their consideration at the end of our engagement. And then now I'm gonna turn it over to June for a few more closing remarks.
Thank you, Zach. Alright, now, we would like to share some important information and reminders with you. First of all, our office is committed to protect your information. So if there's anything confidential or sensitive included in the documents or reports you are providing for audit, please let us know. Second, the estimated audit cost is included in your entrance document and also stated in the engagement letter. Third, we have an audit dispute process. So if there are any concerns or unresolved disagreement during this audit, you are always welcome to reach out to our audit manager and assistant director. And finally, notify us if you become aware of any known or suspected loss anytime doing, before doing, or after the audit. Our office created the financial intelligence tool, also known as FIT, based on the financial data submitted by our entities. This tool allows you to see your financial standing. For example, how many days you can operate based solely on ending cash in the investment balances, and how much of your revenues are being used to make debt payments. If you wish, this tool also lets you compare your city to other cities in terms of services, revenue, and expenditure levels, among other indicators. During the audit, our auditors will use the FIT along with other procedures to assess the financial health of your city. So don't be surprised if our staff inquire about any cautionary or concerning indicators. So on this slide, we're showing the financial health overview for all 281 cities and towns in the state of Washington for fiscal year 2024. You can use the QR code or just go to our website, sao.wa.gov, and start exploring. If you have any questions, feel free to contact our Center for Government Innovation Team, and someone can walk you through it. So in order to satisfy government auditing standards, our office undergoes an external peer review once every three years by the National State Auditors Association. The most recent review was just completed two months ago, and we received a pass rating. Besides regular audits, we provide complimentary support services to help our entities year-round. Our local government support team, also known as LGS, is available to provide assistance on a wide variety of reporting, accounting, and auditing technical questions. This team also is responsible for putting out several trainings every year to keep our entities updated on the latest accounting and reporting topics. And to check out those resources, you can use the QR code again or go to our website, which is this slide. And then our Center for Government Innovation is another team that offers free services to help local and state governments find ways to improve operations, such as lean services and team-building workshops. And you can also access different tools and checklists from the resource library. I want to highlight the Cyber Checkup Service, which is part of this team's the Cyber Smart Program. The Cyber Checkup is designed to assess an entity's vulnerability to common threats and then come up with actionable recommendations for improvement. In addition to the local government support team and the Center for Government Innovation, our fraud investigation team has resources and trainings available to help strengthen controls and minimize fraud in your city. As you can see on this slide, this team's newest resource called Follow the Money is a practical guide for government employees with oversight responsibilities. It provides helpful tips and tricks when reviewing your entity's bank statements. It also tells you what to do if you noticed a red flag, and it contains a checklist that helps you through the six key areas during your monthly bank statement review. And with that, we have concluded our entrance presentation for the city. Are there any questions we may answer at this time?
Council, do we have any questions? So when do you anticipate they will have the exit interview? Do you know what month that will be?
I think you're muted.
It is now, I believe, scheduled for January, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I was muted. I was talking about, yeah, we actually expected to have it mid to late January. So right now, we have it on the agenda for the 25th, I believe. Drew, correct me if I'm wrong, but then it may be moved up potentially as well. We are well underway with the audit.
Yep. So we've got it on the planning schedule at this point for the second meeting in January. If we can move it up, we will. But we want to make sure that there's sufficient time to get it all officially kind of concluded for the most part before we start kind of bringing that information to council's attention. So we're looking forward to that, be another kind of roundtable at 6 o'clock for that exit conference for fiscal year 24. And by that stage, once we go through that process, we will be all up to date on the audit. So we will now be back onto a normal audit schedule from there on, which means basically filing the financial statements for fiscal year 2025 by about May 30th of 2026, and then likely a fiscal year 2025 audit September, around that timeframe, October, November of 2026. So it's a huge accomplishment. Thank you to the accounting division over there. I'm looking at them right now. Jen Hughes, Kylan Henderson, as well as Ann Barker over there, who by the way, was in the Seattle Times. Just mentioned that one. She had her picture taken because she was out there putting sand into bags. So anyway, just a side note on that one. But anyway, thanks to their hard work and effort, we're able to kind of get through this and get caught up in our accounting. And it's been a tremendous lift overall, because we've been really working to get the ERP project established and set up and implemented. So thank you to you guys over there and the teamwork that you've displayed and the heart that you've displayed as well, just to get us to this stage. So, thank you.
I think we'll also recognize the finance director. You were in there too. So I believe you guys completed five audits, and this will be the sixth this year that you've been working on. So, nice job. Any comments or questions for auditors? Alright.
Alright, thank you for having us.
Thank you, June and Zach. Zach, sorry about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, any other comments? Okay, with that, we can give motion to adjourn, and then we will start our council meeting again at 7 o'clock. There's a motion.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Johnson, sent by Councilor Cotton. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And we are adjourned at 6:49. Okay, we just completed a special meeting, and now we are at our council meeting, regular meeting of in December, 7 PM. Let the record show that council was present except for councilmember. Let the record show that council was present except for council member Washington, who's been excused and Councilor Vincent is online. Council, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please lead pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as strong.
We now move to our first item. Regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Johnson, same by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Would like to move the Class Four Work Crew Agreement discussion with Washington State Department of Corrections to a meeting in January. We're trying to get Department of Corrections in here and be good for them to present us stuff to talk about if we're going to talk about it.
Second.
Okay, so it's basically removing it from this current agenda. So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and same by Councilor Johnson. Is there any discussion regarding that one? See none?
Uh, yeah, I got, I got, I got something to say about that. If we could maybe get, I can't see the room, so I don't know who's there from Parks and Public Works, but to talk to us about the time sensitivity of this particular item.
Well, the contract currently stands as signed approved. So any subsequent their actions would have to be a retraction of contract.
Okay, all right, then I withdraw my comments.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Okay, that motion passes and that will be removed from the agenda. Anything else? See none? Going back and approving the overall agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And the agenda is approved as amended. Right. Next item of business is the oath of office for council members Holloway, Cotton and Johnson. And City Clerk Dean, would you please administer the oath?
To get up or?
And of the United States of America.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Yay. If you guys want to make, stand out in front and
Yeah.
Get a picture taken and then do you want a picture with the family? Can hold on to your oath or? Do you guys want to hold on to your oaths or not?
Action shots.
Got a butterfly? Make it through taller now, so.
Can you look at me this way? Can you look at me this way? Oh, awesome. Thank you so. Oh, and I lost you. Okay. Look at your hog. Good job.
All right.
Let's hope the best.
Hey, congratulations. Okay. Congratulations. Next one is AB 25-124, Appointment of Arts Commission. So the purpose of this agenda bill is to appoint Tan Eccleston to position one on the Arts Commission. Council may have a motion to confirm the appointment of Tan Eccleston to the Arts Commission.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, same by Councilor Benson. So first of all, I'll tell you about Tan and then we have discussions. So I am excited to appoint Tan for the Arts Commission. She brings extraordinary blend of artistic and professional experience. She studied in the Academy of Fine Arts in China and later the University of Arts in Japan, where she became architect and chief designer. Her work has been recognized internationally. She is a three-time recipient of Japan's prestigious Architectural Design Award. She's lived in Snoqualmie for 28 years and she told me that she was the architect for the Snoqualmie Community Center. So she'd be a terrific asset to the Arts Commission. So is there any discussion? Right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it is unanimous and she will be joining the Arts Commission. She'll be very excited to hear this. Next item is presentation of the recognition of the motorized stair chair donation. Chief Bailey, will you please present this?
Good evening. I'm just going to real quick get on as a panelist here. So I can share some pictures with you. There we go. Okay. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to talk about an exciting donation we had at the fire department. So I'm here tonight to recognize a donation from Ethel Sturingham. Ethel's daughter Lisa and son-in-law Todd are joining us tonight from their home in Clealum. They weren't able to make it in tonight, but I did want to take a minute just to talk about what they did do for the department and what they donated to the department. So first of all, just to talk about who was donated by and in memory of Ethel. Ethel moved to Snoqualmie in 2016 to be with family after retiring from a fulfilling career as a nurse and subsequently a nursing professor in Indiana. She loved living in Snoqualmie, again, like I said, since 2016. Unfortunately, Ethel passed away in August of this year in 2025. And as part of her estate, she wanted to donate her stair chair to the Snoqualmie Fire Department because of the help they gifted her and because they're such great people. And that's in quotes. I can imagine her saying that about the fire department. Her family said she said a prayer for their safety whenever they heard, whenever she heard the sirens pass. So that's just a little bit about Ethel. Here is a picture of the stair chair that she donated to the fire department. Just to tell you a little bit about what it is. Stair chairs used to move people up and down stairs in their house that normally are not able to walk on their own and do it safely. So we use them on calls, the firefighters. We have these on our aid cars. Looks very similar to the one that's on the picture right here. This is the one that was actually donated, but ours looks similar to this. They can unfold it. Someone could sit on it and you can go up and down the stairs. It's easier than the firefighters trying to carry them. So it's used for medical calls. The benefit for the one that was donated to the fire department though is that it's motorized, it's battery powered. The one we have in the fire department is just, it's got the little tracks, but it's just the strength of the firefighters moving it up and down. So the one that they donated to us is battery operated. Think like tracks on a tank that it will move up and down the stairs on its own, taking a lot of pressure off the firefighter's backs and being safer for the firefighters and the patients on it. So that is what is actually being donated to the, the fire department. Let me scroll down here just a minute here and show you. There we go. So because they're not able to be here tonight from Clealum, so we did have a certificate that we will be mailing to them. Just thanking them for their donation. So I just wanted to display that certificate that was signed by the mayor. Emailed out to them. I just want to take this opportunity again to thank Todd and Lisa and Ethel for thinking of us in her estate and for donating that piece of equipment to the fire department, something that we'll be able to use on our aid cars for many years to come. They, they are joining us online. I'll just give them a minute if they would like to. Todd or Lisa would like to come on and say a few words if they'd like to. If not, then we can close it there. Did they ever join Jimmy? Okay.
Hey Mike, yeah, thanks for the, the kind words there. And you really appreciate what your crew was able to do for Ethel and, you know, in her time of need. And you're happy to put this chair into service for the rest of the community.
Thank you, Todd. And like I said, I'll be mailing out certificate and I really do appreciate you guys thinking of us and coming by the station and donating it. We're, we're really going to get a lot of use out of it.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you, Todd, for the donation. It'll definitely benefit our residents and help our fire department. So thank you so much for the generous gift. Thank you. Moving on is the, is top accomplishments for 2025. City Administrator Champus, would you please lead us in the accomplishments?
As I find the right button. Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor. So council, in your reports, a much likely explanation of things, but just to quickly go through, 2025 was a busy one. You're aware of that. You've been at every meeting, hours and hours. And the combined staff efforts of staff, the mayor and the council has, have produced these accomplishments this year, which including adding, adding three new firefighters. Meeting earlier today with Bailey, we talked about how the mandatory overtime last year for the firefighters was like 1,600 hours, I think.
Seventeen.
Seventeen hundred hours. Sorry, I missed it by that much. And, and this year it's down to 200 hours. That's a significant impact to our firefighters' quality of life. And I, I'm thanking you on behalf of them for that expanded, expanded asset. Additionally, we expanded the wildland fire readiness by purchasing the brush truck. And we also improved our readiness in the, in the town by welcoming our new fire engine. And then, as you know, we achieved our re-accreditation, which reaffirm, reconfirms the fire department's commitment to excellence. Next, the North Bend Police Services Agreement, though ultimately was unsuccessful. The amount of teamwork that, that was demonstrated by police department, the finance department and city hall was, was some of the highest performing government work I've seen in my career. So ultimately, though we were unsuccessful, I believe that level of teamwork and putting together, oh, quite frankly, the lowest responsive bid was an accomplishment. Next is their evidence room. We remodeled the evidence room and, and removed some design faults that have been in place since the building was built. This is a key step that was identified during the LEAP survey. And they also have been working for, for something that's going to come to fruition tonight, which is the e-motorcycle ordinance, hopefully. Community amenities, we did open a splash pad this summer. It was a summer of learning for the Parks Public Works Department. But they pulled it off without a hitch where the public never, never saw. Maybe the city administrator responding at 5:00 PM and finding an employee holding a hose in the pump so it doesn't burn up. So I didn't get to see any of that and it never went down. So Public Works pulled it off. We are much better prepared for next year. Our finance department, they completed four major audits with no findings or no management letters. It was huge. Every, every time I turned around, Drew and team were auditing, 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 auditing. I'm like, doesn't this ever end? So they, they, and now I'm hearing that they've done an audit in two weeks, basically, or maybe four weeks. But this 24 audit, if it truly ends in January is amazing. Our IT department, oh wait, sorry, this is still finance department. We'll get to IT next. Tyler, Tyler has been a beast. We knew it was going to be a beast, but they have rolled out the payroll model and slain most of the dragons in the payroll model. So it's actually behaving. We've been doing all our AP accounts payable through Tyler for the year, which is just setting us up for a much more successful budget process next year. So it really will come to fruition next year in the budget process, where there will be better reporting for, for council and the mayor to look at. And it'll be a little easier for staff to actually submit the budgets. Now our IT department, they completed a full replacement of the wired and wireless network hardware. They significantly improved system efficiency, strengthened cybersecurity. And the biggest thing, they, they have lowered costs. We're here in a meeting today. Fletcher was, was quite proud and he should be quite proud of how he is simplifying the systems so that, so that they are more resilient. He was saying that there were stuff still running under Windows 2003 that he found this year. So thank you for Fletcher and team and we are, we are really lucky to have, have him and his skills. Next, Parks Public Works, they, Andrew Vining specifically, and also Tom Holmes, they, they, they completed the water reclamation facility phase three. Massive, massive public works project. They did it on time and actually ahead of time and under budget. We jokingly used to say Andrew worked over there now. And was spending so much time over the sewer plant. But they got it done and I do believe it's actually performing better than predicted, which is huge also. And then our, our CD department, they, they, they have demonstrated streamlined permitting to the extreme. They, they got the hospital permits in hand in an unheard of time for such a complex project. Thank you to Mona for her dedication on doing that. And then the other thing, the mayor gets a lot of credit for this one. Successfully reducing Snoqualmie's required housing allocation from 1,500 units down to 719. Mona definitely contributed, but the mayor was on this whole project. So she deserves a lot of credit for that also. And then our communications department, of which we have half here, which is Nicole. They did a lot of work behind the scenes on the website, remodeling the website, developing new ways to reach out to the public, the Ross Report. They also did frequent public updates with clearly accessible information about city projects. They also significantly expanded our reach. At the end of the year, we have some of the posts on Facebook were, were being viewed by 95,000 people. I mean, that's huge. An Elkhurt photo alone received 44,000 views. They also relaunched the city academy, which we did, I think it was six weeks after night classes and, and. Night classes and and that was successful. And they also completed the twenty twenty five community survey. And then our HR department, they they have. Taken upon their mission to staff every position and they're driving that vacancy rate really low. So we are now around that five percent mark that we set and just four years ago, we were at thirty percent vacancies. Kim is is. Got it dotted in. She's got total control of that department and she's leading a highly performing group of individuals. That are are really delivering. She also completed the first update to the city personnel policy manual in a decade. Her team has ensured all our employees have achieved the basic FEMA certifications that we may need. To respond in a disaster. And then they also have really strengthened the the development and education. For for all the other lines of business, you know, sexual harassment, et cetera, so that we are meeting the training needs. And we've also received the Well City Award again with sixty seven percent of employment participation in the wellness program. And that secures us a two percent premium premium savings on our employee health benefits, which makes Drew very happy. And then last is our legal and city clerk office, or last but not least. The city clerk's office has been the leading driving force between our records retention. Quite frankly, the stuff was a mess when she got here and she has taken upon herself to just wade in, roll up her sleeves and and get handle on it. With Public Works help, they purged a entire room full of copies and extra sheets of paper. That filled up a dumpster to the point it was so heavy Public Works had to come and move it for the garbage guy so they could get recycled. She also she also leads the public records effort and there were over seven hundred public records requests this year. And those are not quick things. That's not responding to an email. That's hours and hours of work. And then we transitioned our agenda bill process to the laser fish program this year. And she and the city attorney together provided. Excellent staff training to the people are actually writing agenda bills and sets up standards in place so that our agenda bills should be improving. So thank you all and I will turn it back over to Mayor.
Thank you. So this is just a snapshot of accomplishments. When I said we asked each department to send in at least their top ten. And we only needed, you know, we're just take the top ten from like one from each department. They they've accomplished a lot this year and just, you know, this is just a portion of their exceptional work that they've done. So I'd like to. Thank all the staff and let's give them applause. Thank you. Okay, next item is public comment. At this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. There will not be an online public comments. Written comments are encouraged, may be submitted in person, mail or email. Before I read the rest of it, is there anyone that wants to do public comment tonight? So please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone wanting public comment to do public comment this evening. So we're going to close public comment at this time. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. It contains approval of the claims report dated December eighth, twenty twenty five. AB twenty five dash one twelve K and L Gates budget authorization, AB twenty five dash one fourteen Madron Law Contract Amendment. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Walton, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding these items? Seeing none, councilors, there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. And the consent agenda is approved. Next, under ordinances, we have AB twenty five dash one two zero electronic or electric motorized motorcycle ordinance. Councilor Walton, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Absolutely. See. All right. This is council agenda bill twenty five dash one two zero electric motorcycle ordinance. The city of Snoqualmie has and has seen an increase in electric motorcycles, also known as E motorcycles. The city proposes adding an ordinance to clearly define an electric motorcycle along with requirements. For operation in the city limits, I move to approve ordinance thirteen fifteen. Adopting Snoqualmie Municipal Code Chapter ten point three six to define and regulate electric motorcycles. Do I have a second?
Second. Moved by Councilor Walton, segment Kerry Christensen, Councilor Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we have interim chief Horace here to answer any questions.
Well, I will start off council, mayor. This has been a long project for us. I think we started really with this ordinance back in March. After the last meeting, we made a few of the adjustments that were recommended by all. We. Edited and deleted the duplicate sentence under section F in the definitions. And then we added under. The general operations and number six, your proposal of unless. No person shall operate an electric motorcycle while carrying a passenger unless equipped for a passenger by the original manufacturer. So those changes were made and I believe that this will help kind of help help us with our enforcement. Making Snoqualmie a safer place to kind of live, work and play for everybody that's moving around on our streets and trails. I'm here to answer any questions y'all have on those changes that we've made or anything y'all might have beyond that.
Council, do we have any questions or comments? Move to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. And it must passes and the the electric motorcycle ordinance is approved. Thank you. Next one is committee reports, AB twenty five dash one two two resolution adopting new indigent defense standards. Councilor Walton, would you please read the introduction and motion?
What's there? Just a moment here. Yeah, but okay, thank you. All right. The Washington State Supreme Court by order number twenty five seven hundred dash A dash sixteen forty four on June ninth, twenty twenty five. Adopted new standards for indigent defense to be effective January first, twenty twenty six. This requires the city of Snoqualmie to update instant defense standards. I move to approve resolution seventeen forty adopting new standards for indigent defense. Do I have a second?
Second. So it's been moved by Councilor Walton, segment Councilor Cotton. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, councilors, is there any discussion? We have interim chief Horace up there if you have any questions. Councilor Walton.
And I will make the comment, this is a two part proposal. We're doing two pieces to it. The the contract is that we will be considering is actually. Renewable after the first year and we will be looking at the overall costs in about September. To make sure that it's something that's sustainable.
So I can I can add to this, Mayor, council members. In June of twenty twelve, the city adopted resolution eleven sixty four, which was the indigent standards. That were issued by the Supreme Court at that time. Ten years, you know, a little more than ten years later, we're doing this again and there's a cycle of it where they're what they're doing is they're trying to reduce the caseload. The work that is required of public defense. So they've laid out standards reducing, for instance, our public defense. Contractee or contractor runs approximately four hundred cases and the standard is going to drop to a hundred and twenty misdemeanor cases. So in that in that they're trying to reduce that workload and things like that. But before we can. Move forward, we have to repeal the previous resolution and adopt the new one. And because of that, leads to the next one with the change in the contract with Valley Defenders, who we've been using since twenty thirteen. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the. Supreme Court order at this time.
Okay, any questions? Moving to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the resolution adopting new indigent stand defense standards is approved. Next item is AB twenty five dash one two three indigent defense contract with Valley Defenders, PLLC. Councilor Walton, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Right, both the United States and Washington State constitutions require fair legal representation for indigent individuals. There are. There is a constitutional right to court appointed counsel for indigent defendants under RCW thirty nine dash. Or thirty nine point thirty four point one eight zero. Each city is responsible for its own criminal justice responsibilities, including the prosecution. Of misdemeanors and gross misdemeanor offenses. City of Snoqualmie has contracted with Valley Defenders, PLLC. Since January thirteenth, twenty thirteen, providing indigent defense services in criminal cases. Due to a judicial standards change for public defense, the fees associated with these services are increasing. I move to approves approve resolution seventeen forty one approving the contract with Valley Defenders, PLLC. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Walton, segment Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, and then we have interim chief Horace who can answer any questions. Right, moving to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it is the approved, so indigent defense contract with Valley Defenders, PLLC is approved. Is there any further public safety committee report?
Nothing further at this time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there a community development committee report?
No report.
Under Parks and Public Works Committee, we have a community center presentation and update. So tonight, we wanted to provide a year end update to council on the Snoqualmie Community Center and Aquatics Facility. And I'll turn this over to City Administrator Chambles.
Thank you, Mayor. So just wanted to recap. We've had a lot of conversation with the community. We've we've done boards out at the YMCA, which you see a picture of down there in the corner. We asked in the twenty twenty three community center or community survey about the community center. Were sixty six people, percent of people supported building the project. We looked at the post plan about identifying the missing components of activities in recreation in the area. And the number two, right below adults, a lack of adult sports was learn to swim programs for the community. And then in the twenty twenty five community survey, we asked. Whether people would support adding the swimming pool if they were asked to increase property taxes to pay for it. At which thirty six percent said they strongly support, nineteen percent said somewhat supportive and thirty percent were strongly opposed to it. Addition, the missing piece we have, the last time we talked about this. We contracted with community attributes to go ahead and look at the economic impact that the project would possibly. Do to the to the community. So normal thing to do if you're considering spending this much money. And and they said that there's they they predict over forty direct or indirect. Employment jobs as a result of the expansion. Five point three million in annual business revenues and two point two million in labor income. In addition, the expansion would support nine thousand six hundred annual swim lessons at the facility. With four hundred sixteen new daily visits. As part of their work, they use cell phone data to figure out where people go. And it was interesting to find out that the majority of people, when they leave our facility, our Y facility, they go to Safeway. That's by far, it was like a lot that that went there. This was the design that the council asked us to go ahead and proceed with. It has your standard high school six lane competition pool and it has a leisure pool. The competition pool is three thousand three hundred and fifty one square feet. The leisure pool is two thousand two hundred seventy six square feet and there's five thousand six hundred. Square feet of a pool deck. This facility was designed for this community and it was maximized for swimming lessons, which is what the community. Asked for. Our funding picture, as it currently sits, we have about twenty one point six million available in the REIT. That's cash on hand. Well, it's close to cash, just cash gets in government. It's in the bank account. We did receive a million dollar grant from King County and all that money was used in the design of the facility. So that money is gone. That's what we used to do the design. We do have a full bid package ready design. And then the YMCA has agreed to contribute two point five million, of which one point two was awarded by the state. In the in the budget last year. So we have twenty four point one, twenty four point two, basically, available for construction at this time. And so we went ahead and had the contractor update the prices when we were last talking about it in twenty twenty four. The original all in, including the dry side improvements and the wet side improvements came in at twenty nine point five million. Escalated with the in in today's cost, it's coming in at thirty one point four. So then we asked for some additional information. Some some were questions that the Y asked us when we were asking there for additional participation. Some were just to see what options were available. If we only built the competition pool and eliminated the the leisure pool, it comes in at twenty six point three million. To add two additional lanes to the competition pool, so it would be an eight lane competition pool, that would be an additional one point four million. The office build out on the dry side improvements comes out to be at two hundred thousand. The addition of the two fitness rooms was one point five million. The rest of the interior remodeling of the existing facility. Comes out to eight hundred thousand. The exterior sidewalks, a hundred thousand. And then the leisure pool at five point nine million is actually projected in twenty twenty eight dollars. Assuming if we move forward, put the competition pool now, that in the future we would do that. So. I believe that's all the information I have for you.
Councilor Johnson?
Just curious, did the twenty twenty five all in on the previous slide, did that include the extra two lanes or is that just the six lanes?
That would just be the six lines.
Okay, just making sure.
Which one, the all in, the twenty nine, twenty nine point five?
Yeah, the all in numbers are both for a sixth lane competition.
Councilor Walton?
I'm kind of curious, if we just focus on the competition pool and not the entire.
And not the entire all in program. Operating costs have got to be different. What kind of impact does that have for the operating costs?
So we don't pay the operating costs under our agreement with YMCA. I don't know if Josh wants to try to field that question from the podium.
And we do have Josh Sutton, who's the YMCA facilities, he's the executive.
Good evening. Thank you, Josh Sutton, G M Property and Facilities for the YMCA of Greater Seattle. Um, we have, uh, at. Our North Shore YMCA in Bothell and at our West Seattle YMCA, a single tank six lane pool, much like what you see in the drawing. Um, and so we, we could, we could. Cult together some answers for you relatively quickly, um, on that. What I can tell you, having operated the West Seattle Y for about a decade and a half. Um, is that we are able to serve probably about. More than half, probably about sixty percent of the headcount for swim lessons that you saw previously. Out of a single tank pool like this, and that's consistent right now, both at North Shore and at West Seattle. In terms of operations costs, it, it is a less expensive pool to operate because your lifeguarding costs go down. Um, when you have a two tank pool like this, there are times of the day when you're going to have both tanks in operation, and so you'll have. Four guards up and two guards down rotating. And so you can imagine when you go to a single tank pool, that you can take. At least a third, if not forty percent of those costs down. Um, so there, there are some operational savings. On the other end, I would say that there is some economy of scale. And so when you have a larger pool like this, you typically draw a broader membership and you're able to serve. Uh, a wider range of people at the same time. So even though, uh, you have some, you have some savings in a single tank. You don't realize the full savings because when you're able to serve everybody at the same time, there's some value there to members. So I don't mean to be a little squishy about it, but I hope that kind of gives you some of the context without giving you an actual number.
It was a squishy question.
Counsel Walton, you have to follow up?
Yeah, the, the follow up is, um, competition pool and thinking of, you know, the school district that could be a driver behind this. I'm really concerned about the deck space or because, uh, the deck space is one, and the other one is when you look at the footprint. It is like almost half of this footprint is dedicated to the, the, um, non-competition pool. And I, I, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around, you know, is this the best? Design that we could possibly have? And, and once it's built, you can't add lanes. And once it's built, you can't add more deck space. And I guess those are a couple of things that I'm just, I'm kind of nervous about.
Counsel Christensen?
Uh, could I ask, um, Mr. Sutton to respond, just because I believe, if I remember correctly, um, that the deck space for the competition. Pool was based on one that's currently being used in Kent. But I'd want to fact check myself, please.
Uh, that's correct. Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. The, the Kent YMCA pool houses two high school swim teams that practice at that location. Um, and it sometimes houses a dual meet, meaning one high school swim team swimming against one other high school swim team. So the deck capacity can manage for that. Um, we typically close at the Kent YMCA, the pools run par- parallel as opposed to in length. Um, but we typically close the whole pool when we're running a dual meet because just the volume of noise that's involved in running a meet. Um, we're unable to host a multi-swim team, uh, configuration, like three, four, five swim teams at a time in this type of a pool. Because it's really not designed for that. But it does host, uh, the Kent YMCA pool, as I said, two girls swim teams just wrapped up their season, two boys. High school swim teams, public high school swim teams in Kent are currently starting their swim season. And we host probably four dual meets in the girl's season and four dual meets in the boys' season each year. So similar type of configuration there and, and very similar in type in terms of the deck space. Um, yeah.
Counsel Christensen?
Thanks. Could I just add one, one more question there? Um, so when, so if we only went with the six lane pool and we were having, for example, hosting swim meets and things like that. What would that do to the number of children in the Snoqualmie Valley who would be able to access swim lessons? Would that further reduce the number that she'd given us before, or at least the?
The, the numbers that are included of ninety-six hundred swim lessons a year have factored in. Having a potential swim team. And I want to be clear that the swim team benefits the community in a number of different ways. From an operational standpoint, uh, many of our lifeguards that we recruit and swim lesson instructors that we recruit in our pools come from our high school swim teams. We're big fans of hosting high school swim teams in our pools because that's where we grow our own leadership. Many kids' first jobs at a YMCA is as a swim instructor or as a lifeguard. And so there's a lot of value, not just in having the swim team for the benefit of the school and for the benefit of the kids, but also it helps operationally with the Y. So.
Um, Counsel. Benson has his hand up. Can we go to him and then Counsel Walton?
Uh, yeah, I just, I just had a question about, um, the dual meets at the Kent facility. Uh, is there room for spectators at these meets or are these, um, swimmers only that are? It, 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 it appears that the. The room for spectators, at least in this picture, the way I'm imagining it, uh, is incredibly limited. Um, but.
Yeah, you'll see.
Sorry, Councilmember Benson.
No, 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 I'm done. You go.
Um, in the upper right hand corner, you'll see actually a pair of bleachers, uh, two sets of bleachers there on the deck for spectators. Um, while many parents love having their children in, uh, activities like swim team. Uh, the actual draw to most dual meets is not as large as you would think. And so it's reasonable to accommodate most swim meet draw.
I would say. That I ran several swim meets for the months I swim girls swim team and usually the parents that are there are volunteering. So. Counsel Cotton?
Uh, just a question, if, um. Adding the two additional swim lanes, so making it an eight lane competition pool. What does that do to the deck space, which is what fifty-five, fifty-six hundred, I think, was one of the numbers you'd, that was presented earlier?
So it kind of depends on what we're doing to the rest of the building. So if we're, if we're jettisoning, jettisoning the, uh, leisure pool. Um, but you want to plan for building it sometime in the future, there's going to be acres of deck space. Okay. But if you're jettisoning that and trying to shrink the building down. Because that deck space is expensive space because you still got to cover it with the building and heat and, and everything else. Um, we would have to go back and do more design to figure it out. We definitely design. The, first of all, there's codes on the width of deck space, so there is a minimum width. So we would have to meet that, but we would also go back and design for the pullout bleachers like we have. Um, to accommodate spectators and everything else. So I can't give you an exact number. But if we went that route, it would have to go back to design and they could turning it, turn it around in a few weeks. For a exact answer.
Counsel Christensen and then Counsel Walton?
If we added the two additional lanes, would that enable us to have more than two, more than just a dual high school meet? Or would it require more than that?
Uh, you can have more than, uh, two, you can have more than a dual meet with a six lane pool. Um, you could have more than a dual meet with an eight lane pool. Um, and so, so the, the number of lanes, you'll, your, your meat will go more quickly with an eight lane pool. Um, because you may not have to have as many heats in certain levels of swimming in order to work your way through it, um, just because of the count that. So, um. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Walton?
So with this layout, could we move the lazy river to the other side? In a future expansion of the pool? And shrink the building? And what would that do to the overall cost?
The, uh, the, the competition pool only, um, item is shrinking the building. It's also shrinking the locker rooms. To the, to the minimum. So there's minimums required of everything. There's a minimum number of toilets, minimum other number of showers, et cetera. So that number does shrink that down. So I think what you're actually asking is to. Make it bigger, so it would drive it up.
Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, um, removing the leacher pool, uh, just sounds to me like a great project for the school district to do.
Counsel Benson?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Johnson, this discussion about. Eliminating the, uh, leisure pool, um, if I heard right, that, uh. That's going to reduce the usage of the pool by about forty percent, which to me sounds like saying. There's going to be a, a very large percentage of the population that isn't served by the, a pool that is designed for. Basically, high school swim meets. Um, so I think, uh, if I understand Councilmember Johnson's, uh, comment. This, it's, it sounds like we're talking about a pool to accommodate a high school swim team rather than an entire community. And there are segments of the community that desperately need things like lazy rivers for, uh, water, water therapy and, uh, exercise. And, uh, I, you know, I've used a lazy river before. With a mai tai and an inflatable, but that's not the way they're used in community centers. And there's, there's real. Practical and important health benefits from having that. Pool. And I don't think that, um, reducing the size of this project is the right way to go. I think. From my perspective, the, the biggest problem with this project is, isn't big enough. And, uh, no matter what we build, it is automatically going to become a regional pool. And it's going to draw people from all over the region and reducing the size of the pool is just going to create, you know. Side view north, um, you know, it's just going to be, we're, we're just going to have another pool that is insufficient for the need. Uh, so. I don't like the idea of getting rid of the, uh, the other facility, other portion of the facility. That's all I had to say.
Any other comments? Right, we appreciate the presentation and Josh Sutton, we appreciate your. Joining us tonight. Um, looks like, I mean, there are obviously options. I'm. I've always, I've worked on this pool since two thousand and seventeen, so it would be nice at some point to see that we have a pool in the, in Snoqualmie. So. Moving on, is there any further comments for Parks and Public Works or any further reports? No report?
No, nothing.
Okay. Under Finance Administration Committee, we have AB twenty-five dash zero eight nine, Resolution Amending Financial Management Policy. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Financial management policy Snoqualmie is established by the city council. The policy is designed to provide guidance to all stakeholders. Whether they be directly involved in the financial processes, internal control oversight, or any financial transaction. Financial management policy is intended to serve as a blueprint to achieve fiscal stability required to accomplish the goals and objectives of the city's strategic plan. Comprehensive plan, financial elements, and all master plans. Move to approve resolution seventeen twenty-nine amending the financial management policy.
Yeah, with second? Second? Been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Counsel Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this? Seeing none? Any discussion? We have Finance Director Dubute, who's here to answer any questions.
Happy to talk about it. Okay, all right. Um, so we've got some updates to the financial management policy that we're bringing to you, to you today, to your attention. Uh, primarily, this is designed to help support a code cleanup cleanup that we intend to take to council next year. Um, there are basically four major elements of this update to this financial management policy. Uh, one of the goals was to clarify and outline procedures for petty cash, um, overall. That's a part of our current code right now, and so really that takes verbatim that language as a part of the code and puts it directly into the financial management policy. And then ideally, at a later stage, when we're performing this code cleanup, we'll be removing that from the municipal code itself. In addition, another goal of this is to harmonize the surplusing of assets, uh, with R C W thirty-five dot ninety-four dot zero four zero. So just aligning what we've got in our financial management policy, uh, to what is stated in that R C W. Um, in addition, the proposed amended policy updates purchasing thresholds for both the public works, project staff labor, and the public works contract. Procurement categories to match the change to R C W thirty-five dot twenty-three dot three five two, which took effect, uh, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, just to note on that purchasing and contracting matrix threshold, uh, you may have noticed previously that we had included a section for severances and settlements, and that was taken out. Based on the recommendation of the committee at the time. Uh, and then finally, the proposed amended policy consolidates the city's funds into one authorizing location, which will help the city with our future kind of code cleanup. So. Um, over time, we've established a number of funds, you know, decades ago to the present. For the most part, uh, if we're going to go through a code cleanup and remove some of that language, we want to make sure that all this is kind of. Uh, put together into one place and that place would be the financial management policy. Um, so with that said, those are the four major element updates of this. Uh, we do like to. You know, as a matter of House keen being, bring the financial management policy back to you periodically, and I'm sure we'll probably do so again next year before we start the biennial budget process. So. Uh, with that said, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Counsel Cotton?
I just did have a question as far as under the, um. Uh, contracts and, uh. Yeah, or procurement categories. Uh, was there a particular reason that, uh, under, um, public works that. They needed to increase the multi-craft, um, staff labor up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars without council approval? From, it was, it was at a hundred and sixteen and some change, and then it got bumped up to, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand, and I was just wondering if. There was a particular reason that, you know, um, it needed to be done, taken care of in a rapid before. Could get to council for approval.
Um, so I don't think that, we, we need council approval, number one, so we would need your. Uh, insight and buy-in to the proposed change right here. Uh, for the most part, this reflects that change to the R C W that took effect on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. There isn't any sort of design work that we're bringing to your attention or construction contracts that involve multiple trades as a part of that, that we're bringing to you necessarily. Through this, so there really isn't any sort of design rush on our part to get this in front of you. Um, right now, at this stage, we just wanted to make sure that we're reflecting what's in the code. But in addition, it's important to note that the last time that we actually probably looked at public works contracts was probably a good three to four years ago. Certainly have experienced some inflationary increases since that time. So to a certain extent, this is also to just kind of reflect. You know, that sort of, uh, inflationary environment and then, you know, making sure that the administration has their, the right balance between the administration and the legislative branch as well. Making sure that that, we're placing that at the right spot. So.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any pose nay? Not sure that I heard all the voices.
I didn't either.
Voting, everyone in favor?
I was muted, sorry.
Did everyone else vote? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, did you vote?
Yep, it was I.
Okay, so it's unanimous, and it is AB twenty-five, Resolution Amending Financial Management Policy is approved.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too. Um, next item up is totem pole discussion, and then we also have, um, Council Chamber's mural discussion. So. so totem pole discussion, we talked about this in F and A?
Yep, we talked about it in F and A, um.
And we, community liaison.
Oh, I would prefer you begin then. It's totally fine.
You're better talking than I am. Um, all right, so we have the totem pole, all are familiar now on railroad. Uh, it's been out in the weather now for a good number of years. Uh, so if nothing else, it's probably time to take it in, assess it, see if there's any refurbishment we need to do with it. Uh, if we do that, um, we ought to look to the Arts Commission to say, where, where do we want this totem pole to be? Hey, uh, after we've taken a look at it. If, and if it's not going to go back to the place that it is currently, um, what do we do with that spot there on railroad? Um, my, my druthers would be that we not put it back in pa- place where it is. Council's decision whether we want to provide that direction to Arts Commission going in. I think it's an opportunity. The totem pole has been a distraction to some city conversations and some external city conversations. And it's probably just best to do a reset on that particular subject and, uh, take the totem pole out of some of those conversations. So that's my thinking at this stage. Open for discussion, good idea, bad idea?
Council Christian?
Thanks. Um, I'm in agreement with, uh, the mayor person. I think that it should, um, come out and be evaluated. And then further conversations about placement and other things and potentially what would be put there in return should be undertaken at the Arts Commission with potentially conversations with the tribe as well.
Do, and follow up though, do we want to give the Arts Commission some direction that preferable not for, for, not to be turned back to that spot?
Would you like me to?
Speaking anything left for me?
Uh, yes, please.
Holloway, actually. Uh, and you're supposed to. What was that? Oh, yeah, speaking.
Lean forward.
Brian.
Council Cotton?
I'm sorry, I was getting comfortable. Um.
Council Cotton?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment because this is something that we have discussed, um, at the Arts Commission. Um, the issue coming up is that we do, um, a- as of the first of the year, we'll be, um, shy on, uh, a couple of, um, members that would be coming up for renewal. So in, and it's been even now just getting up to speed as far as, um, committee members, we have a problem with getting a quorum to meetings. And so it wouldn't happen in January unless there was a, a special meeting called, probably the earliest might be if we got those two positions filled, then in February, the Arts Commission could, um, uh, you know, entertain discussions on this. And I have brought it up at various, uh, meetings, uh, besides just the Arts Commission to, um, try and get some traction on this issue because it is a point of concern amongst, um, uh, many community members, um, business owners, citizens, and, and, uh, as well as the, the tribe. It's, um, the Soqami tribe is not, uh, are not makers of story poles. So this is not their culture. And, you know, this is definitely something that we wanted to, to, to try and address.
Council Benson?
Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate everybody's position on this. I'd, I'd like to offer a, a different take on it, though. I'm concerned about, uh, the idea of wiping away something that has stood in the town for eight decades. Um, I agree that this is not a, an appropriate celebration of the Soqami tribe because this is not the way that they, uh, present themselves. Totem poles are not a part of, uh, their culture. Um, and eight decade, eight decades ago, a citizen in, of Soqami, in an attempt to honor the tribe, built this story pole. And, um, and it wasn't an appropriate, uh, piece of art to, to succeed at that. That being said, it has stood in Soqami for eight decades now. And it may have been an error to begin with. I think we can all agree on that. But it is now part of Soqami history. And that mistake and that offense is also part of the history of Soqami. I don't think that the appropriate way to deal with an offense is to attempt to erase it or sweep it under the rug. I think that, uh, the, the appropriate way to deal with it is to address it. And, uh, I would much prefer that the totem pole remain up and that, uh, some explanation of it be put next to it, that it is, that it stands as a cautionary tale of, uh, of poorly thought out attempts to do good. Um, I, I think that, that space should be provided for the tribe to present themselves however they, however they see as appropriate. And that we could have, uh, standing together, the mistake that Soqami made with the redress of that mistake right next to it. But if we take down this totem pole, within a month, nobody is going to remember that it was ever there. And the surest way to repeat our mistakes in, in history is to forget them. And, uh, you know, I mean, I've made mistakes in my life that I'd love to sweep under the, under the rug. But it wouldn't do me any good, and it wouldn't do the, the people that I've offended any good either, to pretend that they never happened. I think that, uh, that there is a way to reconcile with our, with our city's history and move forward in a positive way. And the trend that we see over the past six, eight years in our country of just tearing down whatever offends one group or another uh, is not a good pattern for history. And I would love to see Soqami lead in, in dealing with, with problematic history in a more constructive way that's more thoughtful and thinks about not just the past, but the future and not doing these things again.
Thank you, Council Benson, Councilor Benson, Mayor President Holloway.
So let's talk history. You forget I've been here twenty years. That totem pole sat next to the fire station that was in this location of City Hall.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I didn't, I didn't forget you were here. I didn't, I didn't forget you were here. I didn't forget you were here.
Okay. Mayor President Holloway has the floor right now. You had your, you spoke, and now it's his turn.
So in twenty fifteen, that totem pole was sitting alongside what was then the fire station, volunteer fire station for the city of Soqami. It was pulled off the ground, refurbished, and put in its current location at about twenty fifteen. I'd have to go back and look the exact.
Twenty twelve.
Excuse me?
Twenty twelve. Twenty twelve.
Uh, for, might, for me, that's pretty close. Uh, and I believe it was also done by a gentleman in Fall City.
Correct.
To be correct. Okay? I do take umbrage with the use of the term of sweeping things under the carpet. Again, I will remind you, Councilman Benson, we are not to do personal attacks.
Please talk to the chair.
While we're talking to this, all right.
Okay.
Apologies, Chair. Okay? My motion is to take it for assessment into public works. And then have a discussion of what to, have a discussion in Arts Commission, what to do with it after that. Okay? However, I will tell you that this totem pole in its current location is a distraction to conversations moving forward and other matters. Okay? I'm not saying get rid of the totem pole. I'm just saying let's, my preference would be that it not go in its current position so that those other conversations can progress without distraction. Uh, I do also want to reflect back, uh, understand the concern about the Arts Commission. And we, we should work, work that, but there's always the option if, that, if, if this is not progressing, council can pull it back and we can make the decision of what to do. Okay, but I want to give the Arts Commission a, a shot at it.
So you have a motion?
Second.
Okay, and it's, so Mayor President Holloway, and then second by Councilor Christensen, Councilor Cotton?
Yes, and, um, uh, community liaison, uh, we be, if my understanding is correct, pertaining to the history, um, yes, the, the, um, the carver is, um, uh, non-indigent, uh, um, person or of culture, uh, but the pole was not carved to honor the tribe. It was actually carved to honor another settler, um, that, uh, was Caucasian. So as far as I, uh, can recall the history of that, that, that was under discussion. Does that sound unfamiliar to you?
Um, you know, it's, it's been a year and a half since I did this research. Um, it was carved in nineteen thirty-six by Hugh Hines, who was a Fall City resident craftsman and carver of the pole. I believe he also did the Fall City pole, which has since been removed. I don't know where it is. Um, and then, um, George Foster Kelly, resident and warehouse employee, donated the pole to the city of Soqami. Um, so.
That, that was the history that I had read, was that it was not to honor the Soqami tribe, actually.
Uh, nor was it to dishonor. It was.
No, 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 it was.
An imperfect understanding of
of the cultures.
Yeah. Council Button?
I, I'm in full support of removing the totem pole for restoration or other evaluations and that we can continue to discuss the, the, the next place for the totem pole. So I, I totally agree.
Council Christian?
In agreement, and I did want to reiterate again that I think that as we go forward with the future conversations that we do, make sure that we've included the tribe to be simple. They would like to be involved in that's because obviously none of us aren't in a position to speak for the tribe. So it would be important to have them included so that they can make their perspective known.
Council Johnson?
Question for the city attorney. Can the city council make a determination that the totem pole shall not be at that location? Is that something we can do without having asked the Art Commission?
Um, based on our code, I would recommend sending it to the Arts Commission. The Arts Commission provide the recommendation to council. And then council can accept or reject that recommendation or, or modify. So the end decision would be for council.
I think they can hear our preference.
Council Johnson?
Um, I was just curious, i- in the motion, was that one of the things that was, that was in there was to ask them if, I think it was, but.
So let me re- recite the motion.
Mayor President Holloway?
All right. Uh, move to have totem pole, move to public works for assessment and restoration as deemed necessary. And that it go to the Arts Commission for determination of where the pole goes from there with a preference that it not return to its current location. And also that Arts Commission provide recommendation, if it does not go to its current location, what to do with that current location. So those are the three elements of the motion. May I have a second on that revised motion?
Second.
Second.
Is that amendment? So, so that was a motion to amend the original motion?
To supplant the original motion?
Yeah.
Recite.
I don't know if that's a proper.
I think, I think.
Definition or something.
So we have new motion then. So did we, are you, so you withdraw?
Rescind the previous motion with the motion just.
Seconded, who seconded it the first time?
I did.
So you rescinding your second, yes, for the first time. Okay, so this is, so that's now gone. Okay, so now we have the new motion. So by Mayor President Holloway, again by Karen, Councilor Christian, okay? And you have, you wrote it all down with all the additional.
Sorry.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
So we have five ayes and Council Benson voting against. Right, thank you. Moving on is the council chamber. What do you call it? Mural discussion.
All right, uh, point of order.
Yes.
Uh, I was just curious about, uh, the, the, the procedure for, I think there was a rescinding of the second for the original motion. Is that correct?
It was.
And so now that first motion as a result of rescinding that second would have been gone.
Gone, right.
And so now there's only one motion.
Great.
Right.
Okay.
And we voted on it?
And you voted aye.
Yes. Want to make sure we didn't have to go back to something else?
No, because that one's gone. Now we talk about the council chamber mural discussion.
Hi. Let's start with kind of, you've got the murals behind us here. I've been here for a good number of years. Uh, again, uh, it has, boy, there are very, various opinions of art. I won't go into that. But this has been, uh, also a source of some distraction. Um, and really, uh, just to alleviate and not have that distraction immediately present every time we do council member, council meetings. I'd like the motion that, uh, the murals, uh, come down. We put them in storage. We've got the, uh, boxes to hold them appropriately. And that we also look to Arts Commission for disposition of where they go next. And that we do something with the backdrop here, again, probably with the Arts Commission recommendation.
Second.
May I have a second?
This been moved by Mayor to Holloway and then confirmed by, um, Council Johnson with what he said. Basically, bringing them down, have an Arts Commission figure out where they're going to go. Correct, Council Johnson?
Uh, I'm not sure if this is really necessary, but, uh, I might have to move to amend the motion to also include patching the holes in the wall. After we take them down.
Look, yeah. I.
I'm not sure if that's necessary.
The friendly motion.
Okay, all right.
I, I, well.
Mayor President.
And I, I guess I would like to further, uh, guys, can we just get some of those acoustic panels on Amazon and put them up there for a while while we decide? Just something to, for visual distraction and to absorb some of the echo. They're relatively cheap at Amazon. Put them up in a, get an artistic person to put them up. Um, because I would put them in a straight line. Uh, and just so there's some, something visual other than a blank wall behind us.
Second.
Is that additional to?
Little dinosaur, wasn't it?
Yeah, I guess it, there was a, a motion to a- at least do some treatment beyond painting and patching for visual distraction and acoustic absorption.
Okay, so it's little dinosaur, so by Mayor President Holloway and same by Council Johnson. So any other discussion on this? Council Benson, there is.
Yeah, um, so we want to remove what are objectively beautiful paintings that are reflective of the history of the city of Soqami. Um, and replace them with acoustic tiles. I.
Was.
Well, that is one motion.
That is one motion, something, they're called acoustic panels. They're not, acoustic tiles is a different definition.
Regardless, something that is totally unartistic and not reflective of the history of Soqami at all in the governing chamber of the city. I, I, the, the, this is, it beggars belief that we're, that we're talking about. Uh, maybe, maybe somebody could expand on why on earth we would do that.
Council Johnson?
Uh, so my understanding of the little dinosaur, uh, with regard to the acoustic panels is that that was intended to be temporary while there was in the big dinosaur, uh, a referral to the Arts Commission for a long-term solution for what would be the new backing. Just wanted to, um, just clarify that the intent wasn't a permanent swap for those two things, that that was intended, I believe, to be a temporary solution.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other discussion? Council Benson?
The point being that nothing would be preferable to what is hanging there, and I'd like to know why. And I'd like to know why.
Okay, so.
I, I would just state that I've had some conversations with the tribe about it. And I think they've even came and give, um, public comment on it before. And that these, the, the murals depict a version of local history that, um, neither the tribe nor the tribe, neither the city nor the tribe wishes to continue displaying at this time, basically. Councilor Christensen?
Yeah, I would just also say that, you know, in addition to that, you know, we live in a place where most of our residents, one of their favorite things about living in the city is the beautiful green spaces. And the panels that are behind us kind of, while they are historic, right, and look back, they kind of, you know, are more focused on chopping down and, and logging and all the things that a lot of our residents really find really special about Saquonmy. And so I do think that, you know, they, they were painted skillfully, but I don't know that those depictions right now really represent the city or the direction that the city is going. So I wouldn't mind seeing them displayed or handled differently. Not behind us as anyone comes in to give us public comment. Talk about what they want to see in the city.
Councilor Cotton?
Um, and while yes, they, they are, are very artistic and, and well-done. They also, um, don't depict all the history of Saquonmy. And there's no depiction involved with this of the, um, original, um, uh, inhabitants of, of the valley here. You know, the people that were here long before, um, the European settlers came. So I do think that that does, uh, as Councilmember Christiansen alluded to, there's some kind of detraction of, of, of things. While logging has been a big part of our, uh, valley history and city history, it's not all of the, the history, um, that's in, involved in, in, uh, Saquonmy.
True. Mayor Porter Tim Holloway?
We'll split a hair slightly. Um, as far as the history of the city of Saquonmy, it was those guys and those actions that made the city come into place. Having said that though, I'm very pragmatic in here. I have more conversations of distraction around these pictures than of the history or the art or anything else. At that stage, in my mind, I am losing benefit of having it there. It may be beneficial to have it somewhere else to remember that history and that right front, in front and center behind us, there's something else. And I can take those distractions off the table for future conversations. So I'm, I'm very pragmatic in the discussion here. Um, I've been a good number of years behind these pictures and have hidden pictures that I know about in there. Uh, but, uh, again, where it has ceased, where it is more of a distraction than a benefit for conversations in the business of the city, it might be best for it to have a different place where we can focus those conversations around that history and that, that this represents. And we have something else in here to generally represent the city. This, so Ethan, I tried to answer your question.
Councilor Benson?
Hey, you know, I really appreciate that explanation, Brian. I, I, uh, I understand the pragmatism behind your view. Um, I, I do have a different, uh, op- opinion about, about history and the importance to remain true to it. And, um, and this is an important part of Saquonmy's history. It's, it's, as you said, how the city came to be. And, um, and to the, to, to, to Councilmember Christiansen's point about the green spaces, the green spaces are there. Um, you know, logging involves cutting down trees and we've gotten better and better at it. And, uh, it's, it's not a completely destructive process. In fact, it's actually also incredibly constructive that, that, uh, lumber was used to build a whole lot of things, uh, across the country. And, um, and we're still left with an absolutely beautiful city of Saquonmy and, uh, uh, beautiful forests and we're, we're known for our forests. So, uh, I think that, uh, it would be far more appropriate if the council's position is that the, the murals behi- behind the dais should reflect a broader history of Saquonmy, maybe a, a, a more sweeping, uh, scope of that history rather than, uh, just the origins of the, of the area of, of the city. Um, I, I, I love that. I love that thought. But the idea that we need to sacrifice, uh, that space to just a blank wall in the interim, um, as, as the potential conversation might come along to replace it with something equally beautiful. Uh, I, I think, I think that, um, we have something that occupies that space beautifully. And if we want to commission something that will be more reflective of the broader history of the city of Saquonmy, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all. But to, uh, to push this aside in, in favor of a, of a blank wall or acoustic paneling, I, I would be four square against that.
Do you have any other comments? Councilor Button?
Um, I, I do echo the sentiments of, uh, Councilmember Holloway. I, I believe that, um, you know, if you look at most cities, in fact, almost every city, you have a neutral background with the city logo on it. And it's the decisions that we make here are on neutral ground. There, there, we do what's best for the whole community. And, uh, my, my challenge and struggle, first of all, this is a world-renowned artist that, that did this and, and I'm grateful for it. But it is a snapshot in time and time moves forward. And we need as a body to think not only in the past and the whole history of the valley, but also to the future. And for that, I'm, I'm in favor of removing the panels, doing something else with, uh, and having a neutral background with city logo or, or something representing entire city that will stand the test of time.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just wondered if, uh, I just have, uh, two comments and I would need to go back and look at the minutes from, I think it was a September Arts Commission meeting. We discussed the totem pole at that time. The Arts Commission had some questions. They wanted to know what the tribe's plans were, different, different things. So they weren't ready to make a decision at that time. We did talk about the murals and, again, I need to go back, look back and look at the minutes. I'm not even sure if we've been able to approve those minutes because I'm not sure we've had a quorum to be able to approve those minutes. But they were in favor of removing the murals here. So there's that point I just wanted to share. That's fair information you need to be aware of. Secondly, I would just like to say that from a photography standpoint, often people stand right there. We take the photos. I, I personally, from an aesthetic, I find that distracting when we're having photography, you know, when people are being squaring in or the police department, the fire department. So, um, that would just be an aesthetic, artistic point of view would be something behind the wall that is not as distracting or even such a large statement. Um, so.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me my point of view.
Okay, any other discussion? So can you read back the last motion?
As I understood the motions.
The one that we're voting on first, which is the Little Dinosaur.
The Little Dinosaur is to add some treatments to the wall beyond painting and patching such as temporary acoustic panels.
Okay. So that's, that's what we're voting on now. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Yes, we have five ayes and one nay, as we've been voting against. And then the next motion.
Is to remove the council chambers' murals, put in storage and bring back, bring before the Arts Commission for disposition and recommendation for council chambers backdrop.
And what to do with the pictures themselves?
Adding some treatment, yeah, that's, that was already approved, yeah. The past.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
It's a five voting for and, um, one opposed, Councilor Benson. Alright, good discussion. Is there any? Thank you, Nicole Weeby. Any further report from Finance and Administration?
Oh, good gosh, no.
Okay. Then my mayor's report, I've just a small statement since this is my last evening. Um, so over the last nine years, I spent first of all, five, five years, been on council and four years in ma- as mayor. It's been an honor serving the, the Saquonmy community. Um, everything I've done in public service has been shaped by listening to our residents and our businesses. Your voices have helped shape our companies of plan and strategic plans. You've helped guide our priorities, influence our investments and help define the future we've been working together, toward together. And as we reviewed earlier tonight, the accomplishments from these past years are significant. They show that we are moving in the right direction and they provide a strong foundation for the next mayor and administration to build on. So to our residents, thank you for your partnership, kindness and passion for this city. To our employees, thank you for your professionalism, dedication and service every single day. To the new mayor and council, I truly wish success. So it's been an honor to service Saquonmy. Thank you. And is there any community liaison reports? Okay, CNN. Okay. Um, department, department reports, you can just find those in your packet, read it at a later time. And then we have executive session. Tonight, we have two executive sessions. The first is pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. And the second is executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero one one zero one I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, could be a party. So when public knowledge regarding this discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Those attending will be city attorney Deana Burke, city administrator Mike Chambliss, community development director Mona Davis, CIP manager Dylan Gamble. Lasting about twenty minutes. And new action is anticipated following conclusion of these executive session and recording of the meeting will cease. Council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. The city clerk will be informed at the concluding time, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So we do have someone online. So do we have a separate link for Mr. Councilor Benson? We can get him one and send one to him.
Chair. Uh, we have two candidate elects can, can the executive session be extended to them and then briefed, them quickly briefed on their responsibilities in regards to?
Um, I would not, technically, the attorney client privilege doesn't extend to them yet because there, I would recognize that. But we are, we are facilitating briefing on, on city projects to make sure they're up to speed come twelve oh one AM on January first.
I'm just trying to scare them.
So it's been about twenty minutes. So we will take a five-minute recess and reconven- being, we're going to stay here in the council chambers.
We got Deana downstairs.
I think upstairs.
Guess we're going upstairs.
Okay. I guess we'll go upstairs to the Mountside Conference Room instead then. And so we will stop the recordings and take five minutes recess and head upstairs.